Welcome to May 13, 2025, City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Portman McKeer.
Here.
Councilmember Londo.
Present.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Excuse.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Approval of the revised agenda?
Move approval of the agenda as revised.
Support.
Any more changes, dissension? Conversation. We have a new agenda. That takes us to special presentations, proclamation declaring May 2025 Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. If you'd like.
Whereas Huntington's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative disorder affecting more than 30,000 Americans while another 200,000 are genetically at risk of inheriting the expanded gene responsible for causing the disease and whereas each child of a parent with Huntington's disease has a 50% chance of inheriting the condition which can present at earlier ages in successive generations and whereas Huntington's disease typically occurs in midlife between the ages of 30 and 50 although a less common juvenile form can present in childhood or adolescence and whereas the average life expectancy of individuals with Huntington's disease is 10 to 30 years after symptoms begin and earlier age onset is associated with more rapid disease progression and whereas since the discovery of the gene that causes Huntington's disease in 1993, the pace of research has accelerated and today scientists across the nation are conducting important research into Huntington's disease which at present has no effective treatment or cure and whereas it is critical to the success of research and support services to raise awareness in the general public and the medical community about Huntington's disease. Now therefore be it known that Mayor Michael Webb does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Move. And then we go to the proclamation declaring the first Friday of June to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence on the average there are more than 18,000 gun homicides every year and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in high-income countries. And whereas in Michigan has 1,212 gun deaths every year with the rate of 15.1 deaths per 100,000 people, Michigan has the 24th highest gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities in which they are served is among the council members' highest responsibilities and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from the people who shouldn't have them and whereas the pandemic that faced America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place which may result in situations where across the firearms results in increased risk and intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiah Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inauguration parade was tragically shot and killed just weeks later should be now celebrating her 27th birthday and whereas to help honor Hadiah and there are more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day and countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd or the first Friday of June as the 10th National Gun Violence Day Awareness Day. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadad's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose the color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters where out in the woods and the orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7th or the first Friday of June of 2025 to help raise awareness of gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2025, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor their lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can do to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep our children safe. Now therefore be resolved, the city Hazel Park declares the first Friday of June, June 7, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all students to support communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor the value of human life. So move.
You want me to get this one?
Yeah.
City of Hazel Park Resolution 5-010-25, May shall be Military Appreciation Month. Whereas from our earliest days as a nation, our United States Armed Forces have acted with great courage and valor to defend, protect, and preserve the liberty we cherish. Indeed, our very heritage of freedom and democracy is owed to the devotion to country by and the vigilance of generations of servicemen and women. And whereas it is fitting at this time to honor the legacy of strength, courage, and sacrifice of all those who have served and now are serving our country. Whether active duty, National Guard, or Reserve, our military has stood ready in times of peace and in times of conflict to answer our nation's call to duty. And whereas the selfless service to country often demands special sacrifice and hardship, not only from those who serve but their families as well. Throughout our nation's history, many families have borne the greatest burden of all through the loss of a loved one in defense of freedom. It is incumbent upon us as citizens of this great land to remember those sacrifices and to honor our servicemen and women and our veterans, especially those who died in defense of our freedom. And whereas the month of May has been designated by Congress as a particularly appropriate time to recognize and honor our military families as we celebrate Loyalty Day, Victory in Europe Day, Military Spouse Day, Armed Forces Day, and Memorial Day, all in the month of May. And now therefore be it resolved that the Hazel Park City Council hereby resolves that May shall be designated as Military Appreciation Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Thank you, and so move.
I want to thank Alyssa Sullivan. She could not be here tonight, but she remembered to get this on the agenda for us tonight.
Thank you. Takes us to the Public Hearing of Budget and Truth and Taxation. I will open up the public hearing to our yearly budget of 2025 and 2026 of the city of Hazel Park. It's been, I believe it's been posted and should be aligned for anyone's edification of reading and understanding it. If you have questions, you can call our department and they will answer any questions in which you need. Do you have a motion to adopt? I'll close the public hearing, seeing no one.
Move approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget as submitted in Fund and Department Detail Appropriations sections of the accompanying resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? Dissension to the motion of adopting the 2025 and 2026 City Council budget? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I would like to thank Deputy City Manager and Finance Director Lacy Christensen for all of her hard work on this budget as well as Finance Assistant Sammy Martin. Could you both stand up, please, and be recognized?
Thank you.
This was a tough budget. Things are getting tight again. For a few years, local units of government were supported by the large S from the federal government and now those dollars are drying up and we're reorienting ourselves back to, I think, what was a more normal course of behavior and spending. And it was a little tougher this year, so I want to thank Lacy and her team as well as all the department heads who sharpened their pencils this year. We weren't able to get everything that we wanted, but I think that we have a budget that will preserve services and serve our residents well. So a big thank you to all involved and thank you to mayor and council for all of your help and support during the process.
Thank you. I'd like to open up to the civic announcements. We have Tina Clodell.
Good evening, council, and those of you who are here in the audience. I have with me Jean Pepper. I'm the member, we're both members of the Hazel Park Lions Club. I'm one of our past presidents from 2012 and she is our hard-working secretary and treasurer at the present time. As most of you know, we normally in the past in Memorial Day weekend have handled the beer tent, but we're all getting a little older in our years and our feet don't like standing 10 hours a day on cement, I guess you might say. So we had to think of something new this year. And I live right next to the park and ever since we built our discourse in there, I had a lot of opportunity to see things whizzing by the window. Jean is just south of us on the other side of Woodward Heights there, and my daughter plays that game as well. So me and Jean and a few of our other members and Evan Sissel, who is one of our younger members in our club, talked about it and thought, well, let's try this. Let's do a disc golf tournament this year. So we planned it, starting about a month ahead of time, seeking sponsors, putting things together. The good Lord gave us a beautiful blue-sky day last Saturday, and it was wonderful. It was just amazing. All these young people showed up. It was great. What do you want to chat about?
You know, they were an awesome group of guys.
And ladies.
Yeah, there was a few ladies, yes. But it just, I don't know, it was very encouraging and very looking forward to doing this again for next year.
Yeah, and we, her and I and Lois and I, we handled sort of the organizational side of it. I mean, I didn't even know what a card looked like to record your score or anything, so we were looking up things online. And she was busy doing her stuff and her dog Boo was with us all that afternoon and he brought in some attention. We had our Lions Board information. The only thing was a little crazy was some of the wind because it broke the board, but other than that, everyone, they just had a great time, you know? We did a round of nine. We took care of the raffles and the 50/50s. We did the second round of nine and they got their trophies and their presents and their snacks and they went off to their other things they wanted to do. So I'm sure we're probably going to have it again next year, but it just went really well.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Tina?
Takes us to Kathleen and Margaret, Kathleen and Margaret, for the Citywide Yard Sale. Come on up.
If you guys want to plug HBCAN as well, feel free.
We're here for the Citywide Yard. I know we only have three minutes, so.
We can start over. We get six.
Just two people.
That's right.
You get six minutes. Yes, I'm Margaret. I am at 22368 D. V. We run the Citywide Yard Sale every year. This year it's from May 30th through June 1st from 9 to 6.
And to sign up, we just ask that you go to our website. It's hpcan.org/hpsale. And you can also look us up on Facebook, you know, that has a link to sign up as well. And it's just a simple form. You just fill in your address and some information of what you're going to sell. And actually, that information will be included on the map for the weekend. So if you're looking for something in particular, we recommend that you look at that map and find the houses that are selling what you're looking for, so.
This year, we also have printed signs that you could buy that are branded for the Citywide Yard Sale and then customizable so you can put your own addresses on them. Also, a very simple form on our website, hpcan.org/hpsale. And it's super easy. They're not required to participate in the Citywide Yard Sale, so no requirements, but it's a good way to rep it and hopefully make some more money. What else are we talking about?
One thing that we were wondering from City Council is if you would be willing to communicate to the garbage collection company that the Citywide Yard Sale will be happening that weekend? I believe that the garbage is pushed back due to the holiday and if you could just, for safety reasons, let them know that there'll be more pedestrians and potentially more cars, we'd really appreciate that. We didn't think about that in the scheduling of the week.
Tim's here.
Tim's right behind you.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you so much. We just, just for safety sake, and we'll put something out on, you know, Facebook and everything too, just to be careful and cautious, but we just don't want anyone to get hurt.
And then we just wanted to say that we really enjoyed doing this last year. It was a lot of fun. We got to meet so many of the Hazel Park residents and so many businesses participated and did so many things, so it was really great, like building communities. So it's not just about the sales and keeping some of our land sales. It's also about getting to meet everybody, so we hope everybody gets their neighbors to participate too.
You'll have more customers and more sales if there's two, three, four sales on your block. So really get your neighbors into it.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the civic, oh, actually, we have Memorial Day coming up, another civic announcement. It starts at Friday.
We do have Memorial Day coming up. It's starting the Friday before Memorial Day and the festivities will go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. On Monday, Memorial Day, at 9:00 a.m., we will begin the festivities with our veteran ceremony here at 9:00 a.m. at City Hall in the courtyard at the Veterans' Salute to Heroes' Memorial, I should say. And then we will have the Memorial Day Parade. The Memorial Day Parade will begin at the junior high. It will make its way westbound on Nine Mile, turn right, northbound on John R., all the way to Woodward Heights where it will turn left and go westbound and we will arrive at Green Acres Park. So I encourage everybody to come out and see the parade. If you're a civic group and you haven't already registered for the parade, we'd love to have you march and participate in the parade and be part of the festivities here as we honor the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our freedoms. So it's a great, it's a great festival, it's a great ceremony, and it's a great parade. So please participate.
If any group or organization wants to register, just go online to the rec department, talk to Serene Propacian, and get registered so you can be in the parade.
And we do have advanced sale carnival wristbands available for sale at the rec center and at City Hall, the Treasurer's Department. They're $25. It's a savings if you buy in advance, so I encourage you to buy ride tickets in advance for the festival.
And for those families out there, we do have enough police patrols and we have our fair gated off so we can protect our families and the children within the community area so there's no problems. And that's what we're hoping for, is a nice, safe, friendly event.
And if you are 21 years of age or older and you simply want to partake of the festivities in the beer tent, this year the beer tent will be run by the Catalpa Club. I want to thank the Lions Club for their decades of service running that beer tent and I know that some members are here and I'm glad they had a successful disc golf event and I want to thank them for decades, really, because I go back to the very first one in 1988. So it's been a while. So they've done a great job always and we thank them. We look forward to our new partnership and relationship with the Catalpa Club. So you do not need a ride wristband just to go back to the refreshment intent and partake in the festivities.
There's bands playing all weekend. There's bands playing every weekend, every night, the whole weekend, so, and then the afternoon on Monday as well.
Yep, so it's a, it's a fun event. It is a well-policed, safe event. In fact, other communities request our security plan, so we do the best we can to ensure that there are no problems or issues and everybody has a fun, safe time. So please come out. I have a few more, if you don't mind. I'd like to congratulate our own city councilman, Mr. Luke Londo, for being named one of 40 under 40 in Oakland County. Congratulations, councilman. Also Mara Margosi from our Arts Council. She was also chosen as part of the 40 under 40 in Oakland County to be honored and that's great. That's amazing that Hazel Park has two people honored like that in the same 40 under 40 class and it just shows what, what great potential future leadership we have in this city and I think the future of our city is strong and secure. So I think I've made all my announcements.
Well, good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And that will close our civic announcements. We'll open up public discussion. Anyone for public discussion, come up and speak. The microphone's yours for three minutes. Don't all jump at once. We'll close public discussion. Thank you. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items 1 through 12.
Support. Yeah, support. Any dissension? Hearing none. Discussion, seeing none. I just want to bring up 24105 Brennan Appliance, DBA, Doing Business JT Appliance at just north of Nine and a Half in John R. Renewed their license, but we also have a new little coffee roastery just down the street from my shop, 21818 John R. And they have some really good coffee and they have some ice caps. They have double expressos if you're feeling low in the morning and you want to feel better.
You can get an Americano for $2.50.
Yes, you can. It's an incredible price point. He's got a lot going on there. And then Horizon's holding LLC on 23409 Le Quinder. And then, of course, we have all the other things going, land combinations and LLC licenses being approved as well. That takes us to the show cause hearing. We'll open up the show cause hearing for 1148 East Bernard. Is there anyone here representing 1148 East Bernard? Would you do, please stand up and come to the podium. Need your name, an address, or the record, please.
My name's Todd Bradley. 353 East Otis, Hazel Park. I'm representing my boss who couldn't be here and he gave me some questions to ask. This is our first time.
You don't have a connection to the property though, correct? You want to buy it?
Yeah.
So I think we first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's here, so we can come in.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sit back now.
We'll, we'll let her.
We can let you talk.
We have a public hearing after that, then you can come up and speak.
She may need it to get where she's going. I mean, I don't know.
It's my phone. Is this your phone? It's right here. Can you say your name? Say your name so they know who you are.
Barbara Pelfrey.
Okay. And Barbara, you're the owner of the property, right? You're the owner. Barbara's hard of hearing. She, you're the owner of the property, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to get things sorted out.
Okay. So.
A lot of health issues and then you guys shut me out. I can't do anything if I can't, you know, if I can't get in or do anything, I can't do anything.
Okay.
If you guys have any questions.
I'm going through a lot of different medical things. I was trying to find somewhere to live, to move to. I was trying to get things sorted out. I finally managed, I was going blind from cataracts. Then they discovered I had a heart condition, so then I had to cancel the eye surgery. Then, you know, and you're dealing with Medicare. Then you got to go to this doctor, then you got to go to this doctor. I don't have a vehicle to get around. I have to rely on the bus. The bus is not reliable. I'm trying to deal with all these different things. I'm trying to deal with stuff with the house, deal with medical. You know, I'm doing the best I can. I can't make everybody happy, but if I can't get to the house, I went to the doctors. I've been going back and forth to the doctors. I came back and all of a sudden I couldn't do anything. Then they shipped me off somewhere that I didn't know where I was at. I can't, I can't use a phone because I can't hear. I lost my phone in a ride car. The doctor's office I go to, they send like a Lyft car for you. So, because, you know, they send you a text, so I had it in my hand and then I left it in the Lyft car, so then I didn't have my phone.
Barbara, do you know this guy back here who tried to speak up? Do you know this man right here?
No.
Okay. Have you had? Okay.
So I'm doing the best I can. I don't have a whole lot of resources and I'm on my own.
Okay.
And I look at things different than you do. You know, I'm the one living my life. But I wanted to get in the house so I could get my things out of there. I had money in there to pay bills. My bills didn't get paid because the money's in the house. If I can't, everything I had, all my contact numbers, all my information for everything was in that house. I had nothing. I had somebody to do the yard. I could have been taking care of that, but I have no contact, no way to do anything because I don't have access to what I need. That's not helping me.
It looks like, it looks like there was a time and date.
I have somebody that was interested in buying the house, or the property anyway.
It looks like there was a time and date set up for you to go into the house and take the items or remove anything that you would like to have before it got to the hearing date of April 30th of 2025. Is there anything that we missed on the process here?
Sorry.
Amanda?
I can't.
Here, come over this way. He has a question for me. So stand over here for a second. No, and Mr. Pinch can speak to the process and the condition of the home. In terms of the, I guess, social timeline, what I can say is this came in, there was a welfare check a year ago, March, I'm sorry, June of 2024. She'd been reporting missing. Officer Gentilia was very involved in trying to locate her. There was a welfare check finally after days of searching on the home. The condition of the home was in such a state that fire contacted, or PD and fire were involved, contacted us. Mr. Pinch went out. The house was tagged at that point in time. I would also like to give a thank you, maybe in inappropriate time, but a thank you to Ms. Marado who, the day that Barbara came to City Hall, spent an entire day on the phone fighting with Adult Protective Services to try to get them to offer assistance because the home was deplorable. It was not safe.
And at this time, is Ms. Pelfrey living in some facility?
So she, since that time, we couldn't locate her for months because Adult Protective Services did not update her driver's license. Todd, who is in charge of the tagged houses, every month checked SOS. We didn't know. We contacted Adult Protective Services several times ourselves to try to get information. They wouldn't provide it. The officers did as well. She did pop up. Yes, she is local in an assisted living facility and then that's when we started serving her and then that's why there's sort of a bit of a lag. We were keeping tabs on the house and tabs on everything that happened and then Mr. Pinch attempted additional inspections and were not able to fully make those inspections because of the condition of the home. I myself was present, observed fire, having to break out windows to access different rooms because you couldn't through the house. You had to access on the outside.
According to this, there was a hoarding situation as well?
Yeah, stacked. I mean, Roger only put his head in. I was there myself also. Roger can attest to that. Items stacked to the ceiling in some places you couldn't pass. The fire went in because at the time that fire went in, they didn't know if she was in the home, not alive, and so they had to physically go through with the axe and everything. But we, for our employees, don't do that. That's not safe.
So Mrs. Pelfrey is living, Mrs. Pelfrey?
Ms. Pelfrey?
Ms. Pelfrey.
Yeah.
Where are you living at now?
I can't.
Where are you, where are you living at?
Where do you live now?
I'm in Baldwin.
Baldwin.
Baldwin House? It's a nice facility. Is there a reason?
Because my doctors are here. I can get to buses to get around. I know where I'm at.
I just, I just want to ask one question. Is there any reason why we should not look at tearing down this home? After all, the hearing officers at. at tearing down this home? After all, the hearing officers, hearings have already been processed. Any reason?
Is there any reason that you, that the home shouldn't be torn down?
This is your moment to explain.
Just want to get stuff out of there.
Just want your stuff out.
Yes, I had, like I said, I had money there to pay the bills. I couldn't pay the bills because my money was in the house.
Mr. Mayor.
I, hang on.
Whatever I could.
I'm just trying to give her, I'm trying to give her her process.
Do you agree the home needs to be torn down?
Yes.
Yes. You just want to get, you think you have money?
Yes, that's, that's what I was starting to work on when you got, when I was started all this. It's just, I'm on my own and I can't do everything.
Okay.
And I will say to that, we did at a hearing indicate if the home was improved or something happened, Mr. Pinch would go back out and allow her to potentially, he'd reassess it about looking into the home. We did go, we gave her a date and time. She was a half an hour late. I had Kim from our department sit there. But Roger also did look at that point in time. And we determined, at least the way that it was, that it, the liability to let her crawl around in the home.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Was built before anybody here was born.
I get it. I'm sorry, Ms. Pelfrey. But if there's any other comments from you, we'd like to hear them. But if not, we need to move on with the process.
Have a, have a seat.
No, Roger.
Thank you.
Yeah, this, this structure is definitely dangerous to be moving in, particularly if you're elderly and you have issues with trying to do that. I'm afraid there'd be some injury of some form. The fire people got in, and again, they tried to get as far as they could through the building. The bathroom floor collapsed in its large, huge hole through the flooring. There's, it's built on piers. They're skirting around the outside, and we've got a lot of animal and rodent activity. There's evidence of it burrowing up underneath. It's, it's having an effect on the surrounding neighborhood. So it'd be the recommendation, and hearing officer basically put an order and have it demolished.
All right, thank you, Roger. Is there any way we can, even if it's not Ms. Pelfrey, get some of the valuables out possibly? Somebody volunteer?
I mean, the way I can, if you're going to do something like that, my recommendation, and maybe the two chiefs are here, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it unless fire or someone was involved. It was a safety issue. If they, I don't know if that's something that we do. I do hear you, and I would love for that. What I can say is we just, it was a very frustrating process with Adult Protective Services. And I've worked in that system, and so it's hard to condemn. But we were having a very difficult time under, not understanding why no one was contacting us. We were the reporting source. I know they're confidential. It was us. It was multiple people in our building. And the fact that, like, because we wanted them to be able to be like, she has this house, she has this stuff. What, what needs to happen? It does appear at some point, you know, I don't know if it was her or someone else. But if the chiefs are willing, we could try to see if there's a safe way where someone can be directed through. And, but unseen, I would, we would have to defer to what they say.
We'd also have to defer to what Mrs. Pelfrey would say, where the most valuable things were, because I don't think it'd be wise to be crawling around the house that it's unsafe.
Well, we, Mr. Mayor. Question for the gentleman there. You wanted to speak earlier. Are you interested in purchasing this house?
Yeah, my boss is.
Your boss is interested in purchasing this house. Barbara, Barbara, that gentleman is interested in purchasing this house. I don't know whether you would demo it, rehab it, what your intent is.
Well, his question, some of his questions were like, what are the violations, like what?
They're pretty extensive.
It's, this is.
He's used to that, though.
This is, there's an enormous amount of.
And then all the tape and flooring, roofing.
Sounds pretty bad. And it would have to be increased in size, brought up to the current building codes, square footage.
This, I don't know, I don't know if this is a rehab candidate or not. I'm looking at Roger Pinch, and he is shaking his head no. And, you know, Roger's been our.
Let's finish with Mrs. Pelfrey, please, and then we.
First, it's on piers.
Right.
Can't keep it.
I know they're not bartering here.
No, you're right.
I'm, I'm in construction too. He's in construction. You're not telling us something we haven't been through.
I'd like to finish with Mrs. Pelfrey. Please, have a seat.
Okay, I'd like to help her out, too. That's why I'm.
I understand. But we're going to move on. This is an unfortunate situation, and we're going to have to make a tough decision here. And then from that point, if you have inquiries, that's on you and your partner. Mrs. Pelfrey, I, I'm sorry, we have some tough decisions here to make. Mrs. Pelfrey, you hear me? Amanda, you want to help her?
Can you hear them?
Kind of.
We have a tough decision to make here, and we all feel for your situation. And I'm glad that you have a place to go that is beneficial to you and help you get around at your, at this point in your life. But we're going to probably have to make a motion to tear that house down. And Amanda.
Like I said.
Amanda will help you try to find some of your items.
Out of there. I had somebody.
Right. And you will talk to Amanda, right there next to you, that can probably help you get some of your items out of the house.
We will. We will help you get some of the items out of your house. We're going to have to make an appointment with the fire department to make sure, and you might have to direct them a little bit.
Mr. Mayor.
Try.
I'm going to handle this. We're, thank you. We're going to move on now.
The fire chief indicated he would be helpful.
Just talk.
So we're going to try to.
I needed to have help trying to find.
Okay, you guys are ready for a motion.
Hold on, hold on. We're not there yet.
I'm low income, so you can't go over in many places when you don't have.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. We're moving on for the show cause hearing from the public. Is there any other people from the public wishing to speak on this home? We're done, Amanda. Mrs. Pelfrey, go with Amanda, please. Thank you.
We're going to talk to the fire chief in the hallway, okay?
It's open for anyone else who wants to speak on this property. If you want to speak on it, you can.
What's your name and address for the record, sir?
Record.
Todd Bradley.
Speak into the microphone there.
Todd Bradley, three five three East Otis, Hazel Park.
Well, here's the deal. We're going to make a recommendation, one way or another. We don't barter deals here between property owners and potential people that want to buy property. So if you have any issues or anything you want to go from here, if you have a reason why we shouldn't tear down the home, go right ahead. But honestly, this home's pretty bad.
Well, I've been to this house, you know, outside the house, never been in the house. And my boss has bought houses in way worse condition than this. And he's seen this house like he is like, go to this meeting. I don't want to lose this house. And, and it doesn't matter. He can do crawl space, redo crawl spaces. He does that.
And I get it. But our job here as a board is to make a recommendation whether this house is worth standing or not standing, based upon the evidence of which we've had in the past and has conferred through in the last year and a half for Mrs. Pelfrey. We'll make that decision. If you wanted, your partner and you have interest in this home, then I would suggest you contact the city offices or Mrs. Pelfrey and see if you can work out a deal of your own.
Okay, um, is there? It's going to be hard to get hold of her.
You know, I, I.
Talk to Amanda.
Yeah, you can speak with Amanda in the hallway. But I think the reality of this situation is this house is not really a candidate for.
Are you Amanda?
No, she's in.
No, she's in the hall. This, this house really is unlikely to be a candidate to rehab. It's very bad. I think it's in the interest and the health and safety of the community and the neighborhood that it get torn down.
Okay, but I haven't heard yet what, why it's really bad.
Well, you can, it's, you can see the building department tomorrow, and you can get a full report. It's public information.
Oh, okay.
Everything's here.
Oh, so tomorrow I can go online?
You can go, you can go, come here to the building department.
Okay.
And they'll show you everything that's there. Okay?
And then, so then where do we go from there?
If you want to make an offer, I'll come back to council. But I really, I don't, like the mayor said, we can't play let's make a deal here. So they have to, they have to do what they need to do to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community tonight.
He doesn't want to make a deal. He just wants to buy the house.
No, I, I, I understand, but we can't, the mayor is correct. We can't barter with you over a house that we do not own.
It's not proper for us to make those assumptions.
We don't have, we're not owners.
It's not, it's not, it's not in our purview.
I know, I've seen houses tore down in Hazel Park.
And we have two in the past.
Of course, because Hazel Park doesn't take care of them. So this would be better to keep this house than somebody living in it.
If we try not to tear down homes, but this one's pretty bad, man. Been through a fire and everything else.
The roofs are caving in.
The matter of opinion, sir. Thank you. Have a nice day. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. No one for a motion on this property.
Mr. Mayor, I move that due to the dangerous and deplorable condition of the property, the fact that the structure appears to be a hoarding house with items piled waste high and higher everywhere throughout the house and a stench throughout both inside and outside. Food, junk, and debris are throughout the house, making it impassable. That there is evidence of rodent feces and activity throughout the house, that the bathroom is unusable, and the floor is caved into the crawl space below, that the structure is nonconforming and will be required to be brought to twelve hundred square feet with a basement or thirteen hundred square feet without a basement, that Ms. Pelfrey failed to follow the hearing officer's orders dated March twelfth, twenty twenty five, to have the house demolished, that she agreed herself that her house needs to be demolished and has no means to do so herself, that we would affirm the hearing officer's order to demolish the structure within sixty days, that she be given reasonable opportunity to acquire necessary and itemize items from the home or her designee, and that council reserves the right to modify this order at our next council meeting.
Support.
Any more discussion? I have one comment. It's a sad situation that we all have to face in our lives with some of us maybe getting older, or our parents getting older. And hopefully she can, she's found a good place to land, and it will take care of her and help her out. And that makes me feel a little better. But unfortunately, is that this house is in a bad, bad way, and we have to make a decision based for the, for the residents that live around it and the health and safety. Thank you for your motion. We have a second. Any other discussion from city council, dissension? Motion will pass. Thank you, Luke. Moves us to administrative reports, hearing none. Boards and commissions, do we have any recommendations? We have an application here.
I do not have any recommendations.
Receive and file the application for planning. If you have any people you want to bring up at the next meeting, please do so.
That's something we're looking at.
Yeah, this one looks pretty good.
The department heads. And, but we have not interviewed that gentleman.
We have a note. Do you want to interview him first?
Uh, yeah, I think James Finkley will do the interview.
Yep, look good. It goes to old business, do not knock update, anything?
Yes, yes, we do. Various departments within, within the city have been working together to get all the moving parts together. And it's moving right along, and we hope to have a better update for you at the June meeting.
Yeah, this is at the request of Councilman Luke Londo, who wants to establish a no-knock list. We want to do it. We want to do it correctly. This will require us putting up a tab on our website and redoing our processes a little bit with respect to people who apply to be soliciting and do sales door to door here in the city of Hazel Park. So we're in communications now with Revised. They are our website manager. So we're trying to get all the, the moving pieces here together and assembled. And then Melissa's going to modify the ordinance accordingly.
That's a good idea because we have people that are predators, and we need to protect our people here. It does, and it does, you know, you're going to see the politicians and other people with the city, but you're, you're not going to have to hopefully not deal with some idiots that show up and decide they want to be watermen and are really not.
And we'll have a full proposed ordinance at our next meeting.
That's what we're hoping for.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a.
There's, there's more to it. It's, there's, it's, there's a lot to it.
Thank you for the update. New business, a resolution to win condemnation of Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Resolution two zero two five dash five zero five one. I just want to make one comment, and then I will let you speak all you want on this. I comment, and I, and others, other cities, and I made this clear to the county commission, they should have been partners with us. First, listening to us, and we listen to them, and we take their advice, and we take, they take ours, but they didn't want to hear us. Apparently, they're not in tune, or nor do they want to be in tune with the people they represent. We are the local body here, and we represent the people here. And that's why this resolution is being sent to them and written by Councilman Londo for doing a very poor job. Thank you.
Resolution in condemnation of Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Resolution twenty twenty five dash five zero five one. Whereas Hazel Park is a local unit of government subsidiary to Oakland County and the state of Michigan, has a population of fourteen thousand eight hundred and eight residents, and is an ideal place to live, work, and play. And whereas, the city of Hazel Park has a dedicated and passionate staff of nearly one hundred and twenty five employees who provide necessary resources, public safety, utility management, and other services to its citizenry. And whereas, Hazel Park has eight thousand five hundred and fifty eight reel and personal parcels across its two point eight square miles, and has utilized the Oakland County Department of Management and Budgets Equalization Division to provide property assessment administrative services for decades. And whereas, the most recent contract for these services, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, contains a per parcel rate of fourteen dollars and fifty cents, generating a hundred and twenty four thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty four thousand sixty four dollars for the county, which takes into consideration Hazel Park's high volume and close proximity of its parcels, as well as the city's long-term engagement with the county for this arrangement. And whereas, in the span of less than one month, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners introduced, passed out a committee, and adopted Resolution twenty twenty five dash five zero five one, which raises the per parcel rate to thirty dollars and eighty six cents, representing a one hundred and twelve percent increase in growing Hazel Park's cost burden by a hundred and forty thousand thirty three dollars. And whereas, this increase shifts one hundred percent of the property assessment administrative service cost burden, including unnecessary and controversial indirect costs to communities like Hazel Park, despite there being a tangible monetary and real benefit to Oakland County for providing these services to dozens of municipalities across its jurisdiction. And whereas, while this countywide increase would generate an additional ten million dollars in revenue for the county over three years, numerous members of the Board of Commissioners articulated at their May first, twenty twenty five, meeting where this resolution was adopted, that this, that this revenue has not been earmarked or allocated for current or future programs or initiatives, nor would it address any budget deficit, rendering it superfluous to the county's operation while reducing each municipal customer's budget. And whereas, this resolution was passed with a loathsome lack of transparency, communication, and regard for dozens of communities like Hazel Park, and with an urgency and process that prioritize political expediency over effective representation. And whereas, the gentry amendment to Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty fifty one, which was defeated, would have increased per parcel rates by four percent for one year, while giving municipalities an opportunity to meaningfully shape a significant policy shift by directing the board chair to appoint a subcommittee composed of representatives from the county, cities, villages, and townships to study the provision of assessing services and provide long-term recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, as a result of the Board of Commissioners's actions, the city of Hazel Park and dozens of other municipal bodies across Oakland County, which are currently working on our fiscal year twenty twenty six budgets, must now make expeditious budget changes and endure unnecessary difficulties that will directly result in the reduction of services and headcount for no discernible reason other than to pad the county's coffers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Hazel Park City Council condemns in the strongest possible terms, Resolution twenty twenty five dash fifty fifty one, the undemocratic and roughshod process that led to its adoption, and the votes of commissioners in favor of it, despite universal opposition by constituent communities. And be it further resolved that the Hazel Park City Council directs the city manager to solicit proposals for cooperative interlocal and/or private sector property assessment administrative service contract that is not only affordable but collaborative and mutually beneficial. And be it further resolved that the Hazel Park City Council implores the Oakland County Board of Commissioners to reverse course, actually engage with and solicit the input of those they purport to represent, and pass an alternative proposal that more carefully weighs the legitimate need for a cost increase alongside the corresponding financial burden to municipal customers. Be it further resolved that this resolution be transmitted to Chairman Dave Woodward and the entire Oakland County Board of Commissioners, County Executive David Coulter, and to each community utilizing Oakland County for property assessment administrative services for their review and adoption. Your Honor, I move approval.
Support.
Any other dissension, discussion, additions, deletions?
I have discussion, Your Honor. So while this resolution, I think, speaks for itself, I think it's important to remind our constituents what led to this moment. So without allocating a single dime of this ten million dollar county crash grab over three years, the Board of Commissioners saw fit to deprive our residents of nearly a half million dollars over that three-year time period. It's a half million dollars of programs, services, salary for our dedicated City Call employees, overall funding that would have been better allocated by those on this dais than. than to improve our community, than a Board of Commissioners looking to pad the county's already well-stocked coffers. I distributed a template of this resolution to 31 other communities affected by the Board of Commissioners' actions and heard back from more than half of them. Every single one of them supports this resolution, and more than half of the people that reached out to me indicated that they would pass a version of this resolution. I can't recall a time I've ever seen such unanimity among dozens of legislative bodies across Oakland County. We've been using this service longer than I've been alive, and our current cost per parcel, while lower than other communities, reflects, reflects the proximity of our parcels, the square footage of our housing stock, the sheer volume of the parcels that we have in our municipality, and the length of time that we've been a good partner to Oakland County. The Board of Commissioners' action, contrarily, is not the conduct of a good partner, passing off the entire cost of this service despite the real and tangible benefit they realize by providing it, and asking us to subsidize indirect costs like depreciation, which we are already paying for. And perhaps more insulting is that you can see this all occurred during budget season, forcing dozens of municipalities to make cuts or reallocate funds to accommodate this decision, and we're lucky to have people like Lacy and Sammy, who could absorb this reduction in a short timeframe. So I do sincerely hope that the county reverses course, and I implore them to do so, but I just could not sit idly by without advocating for our residents, who are the people that are ultimately going to bear this cost. And at the very least, I do look forward to seeing alternative proposals that don't saddle our residents with the loss of $1.4 million over 10 years.
And we're calm now. Good job. And we're calm now, because when we first got this news, I think we all lit up our text messages and phones and went ballistic. And then we settled down and came to a reasonable way of looking at it, and we should have a conversation, but apparently the county didn't think that, our board chair of the county, I should say, didn't think it was reasonable to have a conversation with us here, and we're just a little pipsquick of a city in his county. And it's time for him to realize that we all, as a collective body of cities and townships within Oakland County, have a voice, and it's time to send a message. Be cooperative, understanding, work with the residents you represent. Asking us to come up, our reverse bill for this is $125,000, they're asking us for another 80, think about your credit card statement comes in, they're asking you for another $80,000 on top of the $125,000 right there to payment, right then. That's what we're having to do. We're having to come up with 80 grand right now, then they're going to raise it again next year, then they're going to perpetuate it even more if they don't make enough money to cover their losses, they say. But without the conversation of the boards and committees that House Mondo brought up, we have a fiduciary duty as a board, as people, to make sure we here can stable our community as a city as a whole, and know everybody can see the transparency in which we provide. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I commend our councilman for writing this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, first of all, I want to commend both you for your strong statements and your strong support of this resolution, and Councilman Luke Londo, who I think has written a nearly perfect resolution that explains in great detail why the city of Hazel Park, and we were joined by many other cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County, in our disgust with the way this process unfolded a few weeks ago. This is an unwarranted and completely out-of-the-blue dramatic increase in our assessing costs. Let me tell you, Hazel Park respects and appreciates Oakland County's Department of Equalization. They do a good job. We like the service, we respect the personnel that they send, and we're not opposed to a reasonable and moderate increase. However, this thing is enormous. So I want to share with the residents the fact that, you know, and County Chairman Dave Woodward is my friend. We've been friends for, I don't know, 27 years. I remember when he first ran for state representative after he was John Freeman's administrative assistant and was helpful to him, and we've worked together many times. But in this case, I have to respectfully be critical of how this process was handled. He did text me earlier today, and he did say that I had misrepresented the math. Well, I did the math, and then I came in, and then Lacy and I did the math, and the math that I have is dead-on accurate, based on what we've been given from the county's Department of Equalization. I'm very critical of the fact that they somehow think that there is some form of uniform per parcel pricing that's fair to the city of Hazel Park. There's no way that it costs as much to assess a parcel in the city of Hazel Park, where our homes are around, you know, 1,000 to 1,200 square feet, they're uniform, they're very modest compared to the same cost to assess a much larger property in some of the northern Oakland County communities. According to the Department of Equalization, we may be, and this is from the department, we may be the longest serv, the longest customer that the Oakland County Department of Equalization has had. So we've been a good, solid customer for them, and we appreciate the service. And like I said, we understand that a reasonable increase may be warranted, but this was out of the clear blue sky, and it's a huge increase, and there was no notification, no justification. I have been texting with my good friend Dave Woodward, who texted me earlier today, and after I explained to him that my math was in fact correct, and I did articulate the fact that I think that it's important for the local units of government to be able to participate in the studies about these rates so that our voices can be heard. And he did text me back, and he said, you know, he'd love to have me on that task force, but he really couldn't put me on that task force if this council passed this resolution tonight. Well, I have to tell my friend, and he is my friend, and we have worked together many times in the past to make good things happen for the city of Hazel Park and Oakland County, I have to explain to my friend that, you know what? I'm from Hazel Park.
We don't back down.
And in Hazel Park, we do not back down. In Hazel Park, we stand up for what's right. I was raised by my parents in this community, and I was raised by other adults in the neighborhood, and teachers, and coaches, and that was the message that I was taught from the time I was the tiniest little kid, that you don't back down if you believe that you're right. And Mayor, members of council, I strongly urge you to pass this resolution and send a strong message to Oakland County that the city of Hazel Park will not back down, we will not roll over, we will not shut up, we will not go quietly into the good night, we're going to stand up, and we're going to fight for our residents 100% of the time.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you. I'll move, I'll move approval of this resolution.
Support.
I think we already have it moved.
Yeah, we already have it.
Did we move it? Oh, I thought you read it, but...
They already did.
All right, good.
We were, we're in the discussion phase. Any dissension to the passing of this motion? Hearing none. Motion's made. Communications from department heads. Amanda?
Bye.
You got any comments since you want to walk out the door?
Sorry?
Sorry.
Just thank you to Chief, who is going to pick up Ms. Palfrey tomorrow and take her to the house and all those things. So when we were trying to figure out the bus and everything, we have a whole, a whole date planned for her, so we're going to hope for that.
That's what I wanted to ask you for your left.
Yes, no, so it'll be, it'll be wonderful. She's just very hard of hearing, but she's very happy. The first time we met her, she hadn't had her eyes fixed yet, so she couldn't see or hear, and so she's really an improved woman since we first met her. She was much more confused, so, you know, I hope, we wish the best for her, and thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Thanks, Amanda. Any other department heads wishing this to come up? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that this week is Police Officer Week, or Police Week. May 15th is dedicated as Peace Officer Memorial Day. It's to honor all law enforcement officers that have died in the line of duty. You'll see our officers wearing the black morning band over our badge. It was my order to have them wear the band for this week, just to, in memory and honor of all officers that have died. Unfortunately, we have Oakland County Sheriff's Deputy, Deputy Reckling. His name will be entered on the wall in Washington DC memorial. We have a couple of our officers that are accompanying them to the memorial for Police Week. So I just want to ask the community to keep Officer Reckling's family in the Oakland County Sheriff's Department in their minds and hearts during this week. I also wanted to just point out with the proclamation for gun violence or Awareness Day in June, that we do have free gun locks that we can distribute to people. You just come to the lobby, we can provide those to you. Also, it's the responsibility of gun owners, once again, you know, to secure your guns. And if you don't do that, you could be held responsible if that firearm is used in a tragic manner. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other department heads?
Chief Two?
Chief Walker.
I just want you guys to know that I'm going to pick up that lady tomorrow at 10:00 AM. I'll take her to her house and get any belongings that's worth saving, and take her back to her house.
Be careful, please.
Really appreciate it.
Looks pretty rough.
I was in it months ago, so I don't know what I'm getting myself into, but I'll do a weekend for the city to help her out.
We're the appropriate protection, you know.
Oh, yeah. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Lacy Christensen?
Light day for you.
Treasurer?
Lacy Christensen, Treasurer, yes, Finance Director. I just want to say on behalf of the Finance Department and the other departments, thank you for passing the 2025-2026 budget. The administration tries to be good stewards of the city's money, and I think with this budget, we have some, some good goals, and we will continue to provide the essential services that we provide. If you have any questions, just get in touch with me.
As always, it looked very nice, you did a good job.
Thank you. Also, again, thank you to Sandy Martin, who's doing a very good job learning my job, and also Sam Drew, who's my Deputy Treasurer, who does, takes in all the money and the payroll and handles all the other parts of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Tim? Jim? All good? Takes us down to City Attorney?
All's good, sir, thank you.
All good. City Manager, you want to continue the statement?
You know what? Michigan system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, and that's why it's important that we be good stewards of your money, and that's why it's important that we make sure that we hold our representatives at the county accountable for their actions when they are unfairly, I think, exploiting the, the communities, the local units of government who've been good partners with them over many decades. Probably we deserve to be treated a little better than that. And again, like I said, Chairman Woodward is my friend, we've known each other for 27 years, we'll be friends tomorrow, at least I'll be his friend tomorrow, and I look forward to working with him to make things better for Hazel Park and everybody in Oakland County, but you know what? There is a better way to do this. I'm still willing to sit on the work group to make recommendations, if you're brave enough to have me, and work with you and anybody else to make things better in this community, and make sure we appropriately right-size the cost for that service in a way that's fair to every resident in Oakland County. So I look forward to that dialogue, Mr. Chairman, and I hope that when I see you face-to-face, we can have that dialogue. Luke Londo, again, what a great resolution, and thank you for taking a leadership role on this and sending this to the other cities, villages, and townships. I've spoken with other city managers, and, you know, very much everybody, you're right, everybody sees it, everybody sees it the same way that we see it. And there were other ways to do this, there were other, more fair proposals that were introduced at that time, and I'll be calling upon our, our own County Commissioner and Erickson Gault to represent us in the future and stand up for Hazel Park and for Madison Heights in such a way that our interests are protected, so that we can continue to enjoy good services from the county as we've enjoyed for decades with this partnership. So again, no criticism of Oakland County's Department of Equalization Assessing, they do an outstanding job, and we do recognize that a modest, appropriate increase is certainly warranted in these inflationary times. We get that. But please work with us, listen to us, we will make our position known, whether you give us a seat at the table, or we have to go up there and just sit there, we will make our position known, and we hope that wiser heads prevail and a more fair and justified pricing structure is put forth.
Thank you. Councilman Londo?
First of all, Happy Bladed Mothers' Day to my wife and to all the mothers out there, as well as all of those that play that role in some way, shape, or form. I appreciate now more than ever, especially as a father of two, that it truly takes a community to raise a child, and that mother means so much more than its literal connotation. Thank you to my colleagues for recognizing May as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. My father-in-law and both of his siblings have Huntington's disease, and I really admire the courage that they live with every day, and I'm extremely hopeful for an eventual cure. Grateful to this body for passing my resolution advocating for our residents to the County Board of Commissioners, and I've already spent more than enough time talking about it, so I'm going to move on. Congratulations to Hazel Park Resident Mara Magurosi Leitner on being recognized as an Oakland County 40 under 40. We are all extremely proud of you for this accomplishment. I say this every year, but a budget is a statement of our values, and every year, I am very proud of what our budget says about Hazel Park. So thank you to Lacy, to Ed, to Sammy, and the entire city team for this Herculean undertaking, and for continuing to put our residents, businesses, City Hall employees, and most importantly, our community first, and I hope to see you all at movement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Andrea Worsten?
Happy Bladed Mothers' Day, Happy Asian American Pacific Islander Month, and I just want to acknowledge the ladies of the Lions Club for thinking outside the box when it comes to things that they can do for the club, and starting, having, I guess, it's going to be an inaugural disc golf. I'm also in the neighborhood of Green Acres Park, and I love seeing the involvement that that has brought that, the gift, the disc golf course has brought to that area. I see a lot of people out there, especially when it's nice and warm. Thank you to the ladies that organized the City Wise Yard Sale. I really appreciate the improvements that you've brought to it with the signs, and I look forward to the future of that as well. Um, let's see. I think that's all I have today. I hope that our councilperson, Alyssa Sullivan, feels better soon and publish the ERA. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, congratulations to Luke and to Mara for the designation, the 40 under 40, and your hard work on that resolution. Thank you. Want to also remind people to watch out for the bicyclists. The weather has been great, some people bicycle, bicycle all through the winter. What was once known as the Hazel Park Casual Bike Club is now known as Hazel Park Pedals, and we used to meet at the high school, but now we're going to start meeting at the Green Acres Park. So check out the Facebook ads real close to you and Jamila. So check Facebook for the dates, it'll be starting soon. Also want to wish a speedy recovery to Alyssa, and for everybody involved, everybody involved. We do appreciate the hard work that goes into preparing a budget every year, and all the more... the moving pieces and not knowing exactly what the income will be, but making a hopeful budget. Hope to see everybody out at the Memorial Day festivities, the parade and everything. It's always a lot of fun. The music's a lot of fun, and really appreciate the Catalpa Club taking on the endeavoring to serve, continue to serve beverages there. It's a big undertaking, and we try to do our best to support by as many as we can. Anyway.
I guess he could say that.
You've been an amazing supporter throughout the decades, Andy.
So if you love someone as much as you love Brew, I'm sorry, if you love someone, tell them, if you have kids, hug them every day and tell them you love them, and thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process.
Thank you. Congratulations, Luke and Mara. It's a big achievement, and thank you again for writing the resolution. I believe it's had every point that we needed to hit. And I also want to go back to our department heads. Without the department heads following the budget in which Lacy Christensen lays out and our standard city manager and city council, they would never follow this budget without their controlling points and their efforts to stay within the specs in which the budget is curtailing. A budget is a worksheet, and we try to make that worksheet work every year. And that's why we were a little setback when we get an $80,000 increase by the county without any kind of consideration or conversation, and just abruptly submitted it out there to be done. And that's where I'm going to leave that. I think we beat that horse tonight enough.
We're ready to talk.
I know we are.
All we want to do is talk. All we want to do is be heard.
Our department heads are following and having conversation with us, and we try to have conversation with them so we can actually try to provide the services within the city that our residents deserve. And Happy Mother's Day related to all the mothers out there, my wife and all of them, and my mother as well, still alive, doing very well. And we, yeah, I want to say to Catherine and Margaret, thank you for putting this on. It's also a big undertaking. We do recognize the people that do go out and try to make things happen, because you're volunteering your time, and we appreciate that. Thank you. And I just want to get back to, we are a community of people, and we have to work together, live together, and support each other. We have a few new businesses coming to town. We're hoping to bring more to town if we can get some of the bad actors that want to set on our properties. And I've seen a lot on Facebook that everybody thinks there's something being built at the old CVS on John R. But we are tearing up this concrete and putting grass and trees in because the owner is a bad actor and does not want or care about the blight within our community. Again, we've had several conversations with this gentleman, and he does not want to help promote our community. So we're going to help him promote it for him at his cost. We're going to surcharge those fees to him and his taxes so our residents don't have to look at this ugly site. And I hope everybody appreciates it until he decides to sell it or find another developer or develop it himself. This is where we are going, and we will not tolerate another bad actor in town. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.